I'm going to go ahead and call to order this meeting in the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is September the ninth. And I will note that my colleagues are present, Commissioner Lee Jones, Commissioner Penny Giffens. I am Julie Thomas, and we'll begin with the public statement read by Commissioner Giffens, please.
Thank you. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Great, thank you so much, Commissioner Giffens. And we'll now turn to department updates, and we'll begin with Ms. Penny Cottle.
Thank you. I really just want to start today with a shout out to Allison Moore and her deputy Kate for assisting us with some phone calls and taking those calls that come in. It is quite the task, and we appreciate the time that they are able to give us to help with that. So, thank you, Allison and Kate, really appreciate that. Otherwise, I just really want to focus on a couple of things today. Questions that have really been, I think, on everyone's mind over the past few weeks as numbers on the state dashboards have increased. The dashboard, the state dashboard, all of the IU numbers, all of their testing is not included in that at this time. We have been working on that. Yesterday, we spoke again with the State Department of Health. IU has sent them some additional information. So I believe that the research is currently going on now to identify the exact glitch or what's happened with those really negative test results. So, once we can identify, or they can identify, what has happened and why those aren't in the system yet, then that can be alleviated. I know that MCCSC school officials have also talked with the State Department of Health. So, just know that we are working to get that rectified. It's not something that we here can fix, but the state is aware of it. They are working to find out what's happening and get that corrected. The other thing that we have done is talked to some epidemiologists. I know that there's concerns about what numbers to look at and that kind of thing. We have said all along, and I will say this again, that there is no one set of numbers that we can look at to make decisions on. It is a full picture of things. But certainly, we want to know what data might drive something forward versus something else. So, the percent positive information is the most weighted dataset in terms of percent positive. So, percent positive of tests versus individual people tests. And that also follows the CDC, it follows our surrounding states as well. So, the point is that when we look at that percent positive over the past week, that gives us the closest picture to the number of cases in relation to the number of tests that have been done. So what's circulating currently in our community? So we don't want any of the numbers, you know, we don't like to see any of them going up. But that percent positivity is the more weighted of that of the two, whether we're looking at individuals or tests that are being done. So even if someone is testing weekly or monthly, their negative test is important for that week because it is part of the mix on what's going on in that week. So, just wanted to try to maybe give a little bit of clarity or let people know that we are looking at those things. And I know that they're concerns for people in the community as well. One of our biggest risks, and I will have said this before, will say it again, is our social gatherings, whether they're big or whether they're small. Sleepovers, playdates, weddings, receptions, as well as really large events or parties. It's all about our behavior and the precautions that are being taken during those events that put us at risk. So we ask that everyone kind of stay the course, that we join together as a community, that we work together as a community, that we support one another as we reduce the transmission of COVID-19. And again, we'll just reiterate, we've said this before, we, not me. So as we assess our behavior and our actions and the precautions that we're taking, we would do that with that mentality of looking out for the "we" and for others, not just for me. That's what I have.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. I'll see if there are comments or questions from my colleagues. Commissioner Jones?
Not right now.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, just thanks for all your continued hard work.
Definitely, you and your staff have done amazing work all throughout the pandemic. We're now on month six, which is unbelievable. And I will note that IU also has a dashboard. I don't have the website in front of me, but they have their general testing, but also the testing for those who are symptomatic listed on there. So you can do a little search and find that if you're looking for information. That will help you clarify local numbers a bit more, I think, for somebody who's very interested in that. Hopefully, the state website will get fixed soon because the numbers look really horrible. And without the negative tests in there, that's what's going to happen. So, yeah, we appreciate all your hard work and your follow-up with the state on that, and hopefully that will be addressed soon. Now we will turn to, and thank you again, Ms. Cottle, we'll turn to Allison Moore.
Good morning. Good morning. I wanted to let everyone know we have several spots still available for our blood drive that's scheduled this month. It is scheduled for the 29th, so we're still a few weeks away. But normally, about this far out, it's usually already full or very close to being full. And we have lots of spots still available. So if that's something that you can make a donation for, I challenge you to go to the redcross.org website and get signed up for a slot allotment. And that information is also on our county website. We have three additional websites scheduled that are not quite ready for you to schedule an appointment yet. As those dates get closer, Red Cross will have them open for those appointments to be made. And they are October 14th, November the 9th, and December the 21st. And we are continuing to work with the Red Cross and the Monroe County Convention Center to have these blood drives. We still have a massive shortage in our area and encourage anyone that can to make an appointment and give of blood. I wanted to report that last Friday was our siren test day. The first Friday of the month is when we have that test. We got several calls, several different emails, just kind of questioning if something was up and were there riots in the area, what did those sirens mean? And so I just wanted just to make it note that when our tornado sirens are activated, it is only for tornadoes, that's the only time that we would ever activate our sirens. And then the first Friday of the month is our test day. So if you hear that test at noon, and then again at seven, those are our test days. If the weather is questionable, we do not test, and we make that executive decision right before those times. We've also gotten several questions, why do we test twice? And so I just wanted to just let the public know that we have two dispatch centers in our county. We have Central Dispatch, and then we have Indiana University. And they are the backup for Central Dispatch. And so we allow both dispatch centers to test their systems during our monthly test. And we also allow both shifts, the day shift and the night shift. So those two dispatch centers rotate every month, which allows different staff members to test the activation. It's a huge process, a several-step process to get those sirens activated, and it allows those dispatchers to have that test as well. And that is why we do that. And so, anyway, that's our plan, and I just wanted to reiterate that for everyone. So, along with the sirens, we, several months ago, had decided, and decided we were going to switch to a new monitoring system. And I brought before you the plans and procedures. I actually think it might have been towards the very, very end of 2018 or 2019 when we had started having those discussions. And then in the beginning of 2020, we had planned to switch to our new system. And then COVID happened. And so tomorrow, we are working with our tech services department and where the main hub of that system is, and we will be switching our monitoring system over. We'll keep our old system for a while to monitor those tornado sirens through both systems just to make sure there are no glitches. But I'm excited to report that we will be having that happen. And then lastly, I picked up an allotment of PPE supplies that I reported last week from the state. The allotment was so large that I get to go back and pick up a second load because we were given so much, which is a wonderful problem to have. So I will be scheduling that second pickup later this week and finding places to store those supplies. So, we're working with our clerk's office, we'll have masks available for voting. We, of course, worked with our schools. And so every child in Monroe County that started school this week was able to get a mask from our department. We are happy to help with the health department and answer phones and given a few hours, one morning a week from myself and one morning a week from our deputy director, just to help out during these trying times. And we will continue to be available and readily for Corona and anything that's needed for Monroe County. Any questions for me?
Right, thank you so much, Ms. Moore, for all your hard work, and thanks for stepping in to help the health department as well. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
Yes, thanks for helping out the health department. I know they're really pressured.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'm just tired from listening to all that you've done this week, Allison.
I know, it's exhausting, yeah? And just a reminder to folks too, if you are curious about why a siren's going off, if you sign up for Resident Alerts on our homepage, you will be notified that it's a test or that there is a storm warning of some sort or whatever's going on. So please go to co.monroe.in.us and click on the megaphone, Resident Alert Sign Up, and you can have these delivered by text or email, whichever's easier. It's a great system, but it's only as effective as the number of people who sign up to receive them. So if you're ever wondering what's going on in the world, it's a great system, and we're so proud to provide that for all Monroe County residents.
Great, thank you for that as well, Commissioner Thomas, yes.
No problem. Thank you, Ms. Moore, we appreciate you, thanks for being here today. And we now have Ms. Ridge for a road and street update, if you would.
Good morning.
Morning.
Business as usual for the highway department. We finished a portion of Red Hill Road last week, from Old Dutch Church to State Road 46. We are out of the area for a couple of weeks. We've been working with a logger in the area, and as soon as he gets done, then we'll go back and finish up. We didn't want to cause damage to new pavement. So, and then also next week, we'll be moving to Reeves Road from Starnes Road to the Owen County line. I do want to say we go back to, or the highway garage facility goes back to winter hours starting next week. So they'll be working, the building be open appointment only from 7:00 to 3:00, Monday through Friday. Right now, they do their summer hours, so that will change beginning Monday. But if you have any questions, business as usual, tree trimming, mowing, patching, so.
Great, thank you, Ms. Ridge. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you.
Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Could you remind people again why we got pushed back on like patching and paving?
Absolutely, absolutely. So when the pandemic hit, March 17th, we typically start doing paving when the plant opens, which is around the first week of April. So when the pandemic hit, we had a lot of people staying at home. We had the social distancing that we needed to enforce. So we were unable to, on a paving crew, you are unable to keep that social distancing at all times. So we were trying to figure things out like everybody else and how we can make it work. We only had crews coming in for essential duties, complaints, trees and roads, major potholes, things like that. We've worked through a lot of it, we've had full staff, we've never closed. We've had full staff probably since May, end of May, June. I've lost completely track of time because I can't believe it's September. But we did lose about three months of our big construction season during that time. We also were down on funding. Our revenues that were estimated, they're estimated basically the year before. So when we were starting to get our draws in from the state, those were lower due to the stay-at-home because our funds are derived from gasoline tax. So we were trying to monitor what we can pave, what we can't pave. Also, that comes out of the same line as pothole patching and snow removal. And so we've been trying to watch the funds, so now we're trying to do some catch-up. But it's just the pandemic, you know? We tried to keep the employees safe and practiced the social distancing the best we can. Today, we still provide the masks, the cleaning, the wipes, everything that we can to keep everybody safe, cleaning the vehicles. To my knowledge, we have not had any cases of COVID in the highway department, and we've had our crews, you know, behind on the papers and everybody doing the best that they can and still trying to get things done during the weather permitting months.
For sure, thank you so much, great question, Commissioner Giffens. Thank you so much for the information, Ms. Ridge. We appreciate you, and we will be hearing from you shortly. Thank you. And next we have Commander Crowe, Monroe County Jail.
Good morning. Just wanted to give a little update on what we're doing here at the Correctional Center as far as COVID-19. I'll start with the physical. A few months ago, Sheriff and Captain Davis with the Road Division applied for a grant and received a grant to purchase items to help with COVID-19. One of the things that was purchased with that grant money was an ionization system, or actually two ionization systems, that were used in the ventilation systems for the Justice Building. There are actually two separate ventilation systems, one through three floors, and then fourth and fifth floors are on a separate. So all of the air that is filtered through the entire building right now runs through the ionization system, which helps us disinfect and sanitize the air that we're breathing. The second thing that was purchased with that grant money was a UVC lighting system. They're mobile light systems. We can move those to different areas within the jail, within the sheriff's department, front office. And again, sanitize, disinfect those areas. We purchased four, so far we have three of them, two of them are in the jail and one's in the sheriff's office. So we're utilizing those 24 hours a day to try to sanitize, disinfect, clean the areas. As far as what the staff are doing right now, anybody that's arrested goes through a screening process, and we will also take a temperature of that arrestee detainee. If they answer yes to certain questions, we're going to refuse the person. They have to go to the hospital to get checked out. Then they'll have clearance before they can come back to the jail. It's also if they have a temperature. We have two negative pressure cells within the jail, so if we do send someone to the hospital, we're able to put them in one of those negative pressure cells so that air is not being moved throughout the jail. As far as staffing goes, before the beginning or prior to each shift, all the staff are tested with temperature. If anyone has a high temperature, they're sent home. We have had a few cases of staff having COVID. But as soon as we find out about those things, as soon as we see that they have any type of signs or symptoms, they're sent home. The good news is, we haven't had any cases of inmates in the jail with COVID. We haven't had anyone that's really shown any signs or symptoms to date, so that's very positive. Again, with staff, they are disinfecting all the heavy hand traffic areas at least three times a day. We have two areas in the jail that are set up as quarantine blocks, and the inmates will be processed into those areas if they're not able to bond out or be released. And they'll be there for 10 to 14 days. And then we look back at least 14 days from that date to see if they've had any contact and had any exposure that they're aware of. Again, we take their temperatures, make sure that they don't have any signs and symptoms. We have changed a lot of the daily tasks that we're doing or we were doing prior to this. We take very few inmates to an actual court now. We're doing all of our initial hearings, a lot of the hearings on telecourts. We've set aside a room that is specifically used for court hearings. We've worked very close with Judge Decoff and the other judges, Judge Decoff being the presiding judge, to get this established, and I think it's been very successful to date. It was something that we all kind of drug our feet with, but the technology's there. And once we started using it, it seems to work pretty well. Anytime there's inmates that are out, again, staff will come behind them, disinfect, sanitize. We're making sure that inmates have soap. All the inmates have access to sinks so they can wash their hands whenever they want to. We issue masks to all of the inmates. Staff all have masks and are using those. So again, I think the biggest thing here is we've not had any positive inmate cases in the Correctional Center for six months.
Right, thank you, Commander Crowe, we appreciate you being here today. I know that questions have arisen, so it's great to have you here to address those. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
That's quite reassuring to hear, and congratulations on the complete lack of any cases. That's really good news.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Thank you for being here today. We have had community members expressing concern about what's going on in the facility, so it's nice to have this information.
Yeah, I have to give a big shout out to my staff. They've done an exceptional job keeping up with this. They've been here every day, they haven't complained, they do what they have to do. So, big shout out to them.
Awesome, thank you, Commander Crowe, we appreciate you being here, thanks so much. And next we will move on to public comment. This is for items that are not on our agenda. Public comment is limited to three minutes. On your computer, you can click through participants and raise your hand, and you will be identified and put through by the ably talented Ms. Dayton. Ms. Dayton, could you let our folks know what audio sound they will hear when they have 30 seconds left on their time? Great, when you hear that, that means you're at 2 minutes 30 seconds. You have 30 seconds left to complete your thought. And with that, let's see if we have any public comment today for items not on our agenda.
First up is Laura Monroe.
Right, thank you. Welcome, Ms. Monroe.
Hello, thank you. Hi, I would like to speak regarding the quality of COVID in the jail. I was put in the jail for 41 days on July 21st due to a technicality, technical probation offense. I did have to stay there 41 days due to, you know, court proceedings being, taking their time. While I was there, I was put into quarantine block for 10 days. They did give us one bar of soap each to begin. However, no staff, or I guess there were a handful of staff, but many staff were not wearing masks when coming into the quarantine block. None of the nurses wore masks, and I would receive my medication twice a day. I would have to open my mouth to show them that I had taken my pills. And there were three nurses on staff, and not one of them wore a mask the entire time I was there. And they were, you know, a foot away from my face looking in my mouth. Again, the quarantine block, few guards wore their masks into the quarantine block, which made it seem kind of pointless to have that if staff was coming in and out of the jail. As far as the soap goes, the woman in the cell next to me asked for soap for five days without getting a replacement bar of soap. The bars of soap are very small and are used very quickly. When I was moved into the E-block, I asked for soap for a week straight. Eventually, I was released, and my bunkie did not have soap in the cell. Many of the cells do not have hot water working, so they're having to wash their hands with cold water and no soap. They did provide mop bucket water and sanitizing solution, but nothing to clean with, so I would ask for maxi pads and clean our cell and our tables with maxi pads. The guards did come in three times a day to clean and sanitize the handles, I did watch that. But again, it was just a very quick swipe-through as they were doing their closing duties at the end of each shift. Staff masks, again, were not used very often. The guards did come into our cell block or into our individual cells a few times a week to do maintenance checks. I did request that guards wore masks, and, you know, they would often tell me that it's their prerogative, they just have to have them on their person. So I had guards coming into my individual cell with no mask on. So my experience there is that staff is not paying attention to the rules.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Monroe. We appreciate your comments today, and those will be passed on to the jail staff. Thank you for speaking up today. Is there anyone else here who wishes to offer public comment on an item not on our agenda?
Next up is Jana Arthur.
Ms. Arthur, good morning.
Good morning. I just want to amplify the things that Laura has stated about the jail. One of the speakers that was presenting, Mr. Crowe, said that there have been no cases. What I'm wondering is how often are people tested? As far as the prisoners go, have they been tested at all? And also, I sat through one of these meetings about the budget concerns, and the jail had asked for a certain amount of money for protecting supplies, cleaning, sanitation, PPE and things like that. And another speaker at this meeting discussed the abundance of PPE that we have received. I've also heard in another meeting, Mr. Crowe state that they simply cannot give folks in there sanitizer, and I understand the concern with that because it is alcoholic and you could drink it. However, in a pandemic, I think that special care has to be taken. COVID tends to affect people of color and poor people overwhelmingly. And that's also a problem with the institution of our jails here is that disproportionately, people are poor, they can't afford lawyers, they end up in jail. And also, people of color are unproportionately represented in the population as far as they are in jail. I think our black population is something like 25% of our jails, and it's only 4% of our population, I might have those figures mixed up. But I just think, given the gravity of COVID, given the fact that however the numbers are derived, we stand at 16%. And people in the jail are people, and they're being treated as though their lives do not matter during a pandemic. And I just think it's appalling that people in jail are not receiving the things that they need to keep themselves safe. They still have a right to their health. And it just goes along with the institution of our jails and prison systems being so incredibly broken. And I think it's really hard to enforce mask laws, but I feel like with the staff at the jail, they should have them at all times. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Arthur, we appreciate your comments today. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer public comment for items not on our agenda?
There are no, their hands raised?
Right, thank you, Ms. Dayton, we appreciate you. Next we will move on to our approval of minutes.
Move approval of the minutes for September 2nd, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second, comments, questions? Edits? Okay, yeah, I'm, thank you, Ms. Freeman, for providing these. I'm going to send you some notes on one of the agenda items just to make sure that it's clear on the record. thank you, Ms. Freeman, for providing these. I'm going to send you some notes on one of the agenda items just to make sure that it's clear on the record. And that's related to the planning item that we discussed. So I will send those today, I promise. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of minutes for September 2nd, 2020?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Minutes are approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims stacket accounts payable September 9th, 2020, and payroll for September 11th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Miller, tell us all about it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gladly do so. A total for claims was $618,743.66. $86,389.12 was for Fox Construction Company, which was for a couple of highway garage projects. $79,950 dollars was for Motorola Solutions, for our central dispatch services for two years. Finally, $66,757.33 was for Advanced Correctional, which was for onsite medical and mental health services for the jail for the month of September. As far as payroll was concerned, the total was $1,537,183.70. $1,084,160.38 was for the main and supplemental payroll, the direct costs, and the remaining $453,023.32 were for the indirect costs, which primarily consisted of taxes and perp.
Great. Thank you so much, Mr. Miller. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Giffens?
No, thanks for laying it out, of course.
Right. And with that, we will open it up for public comment. Again, go through Participants tab and raise your hand if you have public comment on any of our agenda items as we go through this.
We have one hand raised. Nicole Johnson.
Thank you. Good morning, Ms. Johnson.
It appears to be muted.
Ah, yes.
I have requested an unmute. I can request an unmute, but it is up to the individual person to actually allow the unmute.
Um, well, let's, let's see if we can take her comment later. So let's see if you can and get get that unmuted with her. That would be anything you can do, Ms. Dayton. I know it's difficult from, to do that from your end. I appreciate that. Let's see if we can get that. If if she becomes unmuted, we can have her speak at another time during our meeting, if that works.
That sounds good.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Any other public comment on this item?
There are no other hands raised.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on accounts payable September 9th, 2020, and payroll September 11th, 2020?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Claims are approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. With that, we will, thank you, Mr. Miller, and with that, we'll move on to new business, please.
Approved, Matthew. I'm not sure how you pronounce that. Architects Agreement for Recorder's Office, Fund Name: Perpetuation, Fund Number: 1189, in the amount of $9,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Schmitz was on here. There he is. Okay. Recorder, Eric Schmitz.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Oh, here I am. Okay.
There you are.
All right. Okay. So basically, what we're doing is we are redesigning and repurposing the front customer counter and the front work area. As you come in the office, there's, there's kind of like a, there's an area where it's where we have the plaque cabinets and a bunch of mortgage boats that need to, that need to move somewhere. And we want to add a couple of workstation areas, the workstations in that area to the left. And then to the right, we will have one plaque cabinet remaining and sort of a, a sitting waiting area. The other thing is that we will have pullout drawers and cabinets under the countertops so that we are able to move our printers and equipment, you know, other equipment that doesn't have to be there. Really, the only thing that needs to be on the top is, you know, the monitors, the monitors, keyboards, and the mice. That'll let us clear up a lot of space there. And let's see, what else? Okay, I talked about the plaque cabinets. They're going to be moving to the surveyors, so we'll still have those. But these are all, almost all in our database system, so you can get to them on the computer, which we've accomplished over the past few years. Uh, let's see, um, sorry, too many ums and ahs. We, let me get my notes. Okay, um, regarding, regarding the additional workstations, this will let us add another space for a searcher to come in if we're still under the partial closing by the time the project is complete. So I'm open to whatever questions you might have.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Schmitz. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes. Are are the new workstations, are they for the public?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, when I was looking through the the contract, it indicates that there's, what was it, a maximum of $3,000 for reimbursable expenses. How, and I apologize for not sending this to you earlier. I only got the packets yesterday, so.
Okay.
But do we need to take that reimbursable expense amount into the, into? Does it need to be built into what we're approving today, I guess, is what I need to say.
I would suggest to note it for the record, as you did. And I think is the language of the contract is included in the packet, so I think otherwise, I think you are sufficient to, for approval.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, um, so, yeah, that was, that was one of my questions, because design bid, so you are going to use the architectural firm to do the bid documents, it looks like. And, and what about the historic nature of some of the furniture countertops, et cetera, in the office? Is that all going to be maintained?
Oh, the the countertop is absolutely going to be maintained.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I would not. I love that countertop.
It's, it's, it's such a great historic piece of the courthouse. It's, it's amazing. So, yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad that it's, it's just a good thing to reassure the public that that's being taken care of and maintained as it is.
And the the low half door, the wooden half door that's there.
Right, right. How many people have gone through that half door?
Oh, oh. Hundreds of thousands? I don't know.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's amazing. That's great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there is any public comment on this item.
There are no additional hands raised.
Thank you so much. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, would you please call the roll on the Matthew Architects Agreement for the Recorder's Office not to exceed $9,000?
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Agreement is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next item, please.
Move to approve National CineMedia Agreement for YSB Safe Place. Fund Name: Runaway Homeless Youth. Fund Number: 8120, in the amount of $1,440.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Nasby.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's been a couple of months. It's good to see you. My name is Bridgette Nasby. I am the Shelter Outreach and Safe Place Coordinator for Youth Services Bureau of Monroe County. This year, we added the additional campaign with National CineMedia to increase awareness, as most of our outreach events have been canceled. This campaign does have an added online component in addition to the in theater ads, so we were trying to kind of mitigate the chance that theaters not get the attendance that we're looking at. As you might remember, our National CineMedia contract is part of the RHY grant. And so it educates and promotes awareness of the Safe Place program, and a commercial is played before all PG rated movies as well as on the lobby screens. And this year, they'll actually increase banner ads on phones and of moviegoers as well. And I can go into the language if you are interested in how that works. It's a little bit scary, but that is the world we live in now, I guess. But this demographic, we should be able to reach a little over 26,000 youth and adults through the period of October 2nd through November 12th.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Nasby. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
This sounds like a very worthwhile endeavor. Do you know exactly how, well, you've told us how many people it reaches. Do you have any idea of how effective it is?
So we have quite a few years of experience with National CineMedia, and it has been a really worthwhile partnership for us. So the numbers that I give are always projected impressions that they make based on their numbers of people attending theaters. Of course, this year will look a little different. But that online component is what I talk to them mostly about. And what that does is it pulls the IP addresses from phones of people who have attended movies. And what it does, it will, it will run banner ads. I'm trying to recall exactly how this works, because I am not a tech person. But it will run banner ads and video ads on those phones with the apps that they're using, especially with apps connected to the the businesses that work with National CineMedia and ad. So they have relationships with app providers that will allow them to do that, and so that's kind of where we're moving. And I'm hoping at that point, then, just like our Comcast contract, we can start to actually garner the data that says how many people specifically watch the ads and at how much they watch that. So did they watch 100%, 50%, 25%? So this will be our first year doing that, so we'll see what that looks like.
I'm also curious, with the pandemic, have you seen any increase in the number of runaways?
We actually have not in terms of Safe Place. And that's actually a statewide, kind of, what I want to say, what we're seeing statewide, I guess. I work at the state level with other Safe Place coordinators, and they are seeing a lower number of Safe Place calls specifically. However, what we are seeing is more, and you can talk to our executive director, Vicky, I'm sure she could answer more of these questions, being, she being on the child protection team. But with the cases that we are seeing, they may be more severe. So our calls may be going down, but the cases may be more severe when we do get the calls. So we want to make sure that we do have a program available and making sure kids know that it's available for them, because this is the one way kids can access help on their own. It's a little bit of the difference there.
Great. Thank you so much. Commissioner Giffens?
Did I note that this is actually being paid for with a grant? I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's wonderful.
Yeah. Excellent. Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Nasby. Comments or questions from the public? Again, go to the Participants link at the bottom of the screen if you're on a PC and click on Raise Hands.
There are no additional hands raised.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Thank you again, Ms. Nasby. And Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the National CineMedia Agreement for YSB Safe Place?
Yes. Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Agreement is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Move to approve ASI Agreement Regarding Highway and Emergency Management. Fund Name: County General. Fund Number: 1,000, in the amount of $400 bi-weekly.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, this is an agreement, as you know, that we have completed our highway garage project where we moved emergency management and the weights and measures divisions into that new, new space. This agreement will provide cleaning services for there as well as the administrative offices of the highway garage itself. And it's $400 bi-weekly, and I think listed in there is the services they'll be perform, some of it weekly, some of it monthly, and keeping the places clean.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yes. To me, that did not sound like very much cleaning. Only clean bathrooms once a week and the rest of it once a month. Is that truly adequate?
I, I would say that the vendor has worked with our highway and emergency management people, and this is what they felt they needed in order to get that accomplished.
So are they doing their own sanitizing, highway and emergency management?
I assume so, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
They are, they are indeed. They are indeed. Good question. Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, my, I was also questioning what Commissioner Jones just was asking about, so.
I would say if there's anything like the legal department, everybody has one of these and a nice cloth rag, and we take care of it.
Absolutely. Yep. Great. Thank you so much. Let's see if there is any public comment on this item. Again, go through the Participants tab and click on Raise Hands.
There are no additional hands raised.
Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ASI Agreement Regarding Highway and Emergency Management?
Yes. Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Agreement is approved, 3 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Approved. End that change orders, number 21 and number 22 for Fullerton Pike Phase 1. Fund Name: Local Road and Street. Fund Number: 1169, in the amount of $6,653.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
Hello again. So change order 21, that is for an inlet reconstruction due to some field adjustments needed for a pipe culvert and pipe diameter. So the cost of that change order was $2,651. Change order 23 is the installation of a type E inlet to allow the pipe alignment to go between a utility pole and an existing sanitary sewer trunk line. The amount of that change order was $3,902. I believe these were in the area of Nimitt Drive. We had extended the project down a little bit to include that area.
Great. Thank you so much. And I will note for the record that the state portion of this is $5,242.40, and the local road and street portion is actually $1,310.60. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Could you possibly tell me what a type E inlet is?
I can find out for you.
We can ask at Stormwater this afternoon. We can ask at Stormwater this afternoon.
You can ask at Stormwater this afternoon.
I go all questions for Stormwater, so. So, so anyone who wants to know.
Types.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll, we'll do that like the, uh, the old soap operas continuing, the continuing storyline will be at 3 o'clock this afternoon. If anybody wants to find out the answer, it's like a little trivia question we'll implant for the, uh, for the public. Excellent.
I'm going to see a picture too. I mean.
Okay.
The type E inlet, I can do that.
All right. Good. Well, homework. Um, excellent. And, um, is there any, uh, public comments on this item?
There are no additional hands raised.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role in Indot Change Orders 21 and 22 for Fullerton Pike Phase One?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Uh, change orders are approved three to zero.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, next item, please.
Approve Indot Agreement for Bicentennial Pathway. Fund name, Cumulative Capital. Fund number 1138 in the amount of $2,787,262.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
So this is for our bicentennial pathway project, which basically is City Limits Audubon Drive up to, um, past the fire station. Uh, they call it, I believe, Fire Station Hill. Uh, we're in the process of doing appraisals and everything for the right of way for this project. And this is actually the project coordination for construction, uh, between Monroe County and, um, Indot. Uh, the local match of that would be $540,208 and the state match would be $2,247,054. It's an 80/20 split. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Ridge. Uh, Commissioner Jones?
Nope, not right now.
Commissioner Giffens?
I, I would, when we talk about the longevity of projects, to see that this kind of was started in 2009 and then to see the names, the signatures on the original contracts. Yeah. You're in it for the long haul, Ms. Ridge.
Yeah. Um, and Penny, did you notice it is 1.04 miles in? I did get that in there. So, but actually, this was the project that started on the east side of town. Um, and due to, due to the terrain, it was not, um, feasible. Um, it was not possible to build a trail on that side. So uh, we were, instead of losing the project and the funding within Dot, they worked with us to kind of do a route modification of something to lead from Bloomington to Lake Lemon. So this was kind of like, um, the first phase of that. And, uh, to not lose that project that originated in 2009.
Yeah.
Amazing.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's too bad. It is really difficult to, uh, get Indot to get some of the big state roads, uh, with sufficient bike lanes. And, uh, that's really, uh, too bad and it's very dangerous. So everybody, please be really careful, especially now the schools are back open. State Road 45, State Road 46, please, please, please be very careful. Watch for cyclists. Be gentle, be kind. Don't be in a big hurry. Um, and, um, and it's really, I think it's really great though, that this, this project is going to connect sort of Griffey with Lake Lemon eventually. Um, and it will provide on another very difficult, uh, road for cyclists, it will provide another really important, uh, safety feature that at least we can do that. Uh, whereas the state is responsible for State Road 45 and 46. I get a lot of questions about that all the time. Why can't you put a bike lane? Well, I'd love to. Wouldn't that be great to have a bike lane on State Road 45 and 46? We can, that is not our purview. We cannot do that. We've asked the state. We continue to ask the state. Um, we just, you know, we had a fatality, um, what, a year ago or a little longer? Um, it, it's horrible and we just all have to be really careful and mindful of the fact that, you know, we, we need to give cyclists enough room and, uh, the space that they need to be safe, um, on very hilly, curvy roads. And with that, let's see. Let's see if there are any, um, items, uh, anybody from the public who wishes to comment? See, uh, Mr. Schmidt says he'd love to see a east side corridor, which, which is what we're working on. Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no additional hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dayton. Uh, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role in the Indot Agreement for the Bicentennial Pathway?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Agreement is approved three to zero.
Yeah, and I will just note that this is, this is one of the, uh, bicentennial projects of 2018 to commemorate the 200th anniversary of Monroe County's founding. So at some point in the future, we will put a really great, uh, marker or sign up at this pathway so that this is sort of the, uh, memento we are passing down for future generations, a gift from today's Monroe County residents for future Monroe County residents. So it's a, it's a great thing. Thank you so much. Um, Ms. Dayton, have you been able to get, uh, Ms. Johnson's, uh, computer unmuted? Have you been able to work with her at all?
Uh, I have not.
Okay.
I'm right here.
Very good. Thank you. We said we could not, we could not, you were muted through, uh, the, um, the, uh, claims, but we're happy to take your comment now.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to say in response to what the sheriff said, or the, one of the sheriffs, I can't remember his name, um, said earlier. While I appreciate all of the efforts that they are, um, making, and I especially am happy to hear about the UVC and the ionizers, absolutely. But you cannot have positives if you're not testing. And he didn't say he tested. If they test, when they test, how they test, if they test often, he didn't say anything about testing. Neither staff, he didn't mention that some staff were positive, but he didn't say anything. And you can't have positive cases if you're not testing, um, inmates. And according to Laura, who spoke earlier, um, she just informed me that she was not tested the entire 41 days that she was there, and neither were the other 22 women that she was around at that time. Um, that being said, I have significant issues with the disparity in information coming from the sheriffs and, uh, someone who experienced 41 days of incarceration on a nonviolent offense. And I will yield the rest of my time, but I think that that needs to be addressed publicly. They need to come up with information.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thanks for, uh, your patience and hanging in there with us. Uh, we appreciated hearing from you. And with that, um, we don't have any appointments today. Um, we do have some announcements. Uh, Commissioner Giffens, you want to talk a little bit about the census? Apparently it's still on.
Right, the, they, it's been hard, uh, very, very hard with COVID, and they've had to suspend things at a couple of different times with the door to door, uh, knocking. I have a friend that moved from here up to, um, Wisconsin, and she, she tells every day, you know, about her experiences in knocking doors. But when people come, please answer fully. Uh, it makes a huge difference. We stand to lose billions upon millions of dollars in federal and in some cases state funding if there's a lot of undercounting in Monroe County. And, um, students were supposed to have been here April the 1st, so if, for students, if they knock on your door, please, yes. Go ahead and answer those census questions for us. It'll make a big difference. When, uh, Commissioner Thomas talks about the roadway and benefiting future generations, what you're answering today will benefit future generations as well.
Yeah, it's a great point. Um, and you can still go online, correct?
Yes.
Great. So get online and complete your form if you haven't done so yet. There's been a recent federal court issue related to this and the census is still on as it, as it should be. This has been a difficult year to collect census numbers and it is, it's, um, it's, in terms of health, there's a, there's a safety risk with having people come to your door. So it's better just to go online and get this done. Great. Uh, it feels like so long ago when I filled mine out online, I was thinking, I did it about a week before the deadline. And I was like, man, that feels like 34 years ago. Um, I just wanted to, uh, offer, um, a few, uh, announcements just for all the businesses in Monroe County and also for all of our social service, uh, organizations in the county. Monroe County Government is providing, uh, CARES funding, uh, for you for non-payroll COVID expenses that have not already been covered by a loan or a grant. Uh, so if you are in that situation, go to co.munro.in.us and fill out the form. You'll be asked for receipts. As of September 3rd, we have, uh, submitted over $61,000 in reimbursements for our local businesses and social service agencies, which we are so proud to do. It is very important that we, we keep our local economy vital. The League of Women Voters is hosting a few, uh, virtual film screenings with a virtual panel, uh, following it to answer your questions. Uh, Tuesday, the 15th, uh, suppressed the fight for the vote. Uh, Tuesday, uh, the 22nd of September on Civil War US Elections Under Siege. Both of these are at 7:00 PM. Go to LWV-BMC for Legal Women Voters, Bloomington, Monroe County.org/film. Films, plural, films. Um, and you are welcome to, there's no pause, of course. Uh, this is a great item for, um, our residents, uh, to understand the vote. And reminder to everybody that, uh, your registration deadline, uh, to vote in this year's general election is, um, October 5th. Uh, in-person early voting begins October 6th already. To make sure that you are registered to vote, uh, to find out all kinds of great information, please go to indianavoters.com and/or monroecountyvoters.us. Uh, we are, uh, working with the, um, Elections Division to make sure that we are making every polling place as safe as possible. Uh, but please, uh, wear your mask, although we will provide them for you, but please, uh, practice social distancing. And, um, all of that good stuff. Also a reminder that we worked with the County Council to provide a Township Assistance Fund. If you are anywhere in Monroe County and you are struggling to pay, uh, rent, utilities and other basic expenses, every Monroe County resident has a township trustee. Please contact, uh, your township trustee. We have provided additional funding to help because we know that COVID is hitting our residents, um, really hard economically. And so, please contact your township, uh, trustee. If you need assistance, uh, don't wait, do it now. And with that, uh, I also want to let folks know that now's the time to think about serving on boards and commissions for Monroe County. We are running them virtually, uh, but, um, the importance of your work is not virtual. It's very important. And so if you would like to apply for a board or commission, uh, seat, please, uh, go to co.munro.in.us and search under Boards and Commissions, uh, for the application. You can also look at the existing boards and commissions, look at some minutes from past meetings, uh, see if it's something that you want to do. If you have any questions, you can contact us or anyone at our office. Um, any other, um, announcements or information?
Yes, um, I would like to thank Ms. Freeman for including in our minutes the information about contacting the trustees. If you're having any trouble finding that, you can find it there. And I would also like to thank the TSD Department for showing on, on the screen any links that we've mentioned during the course of our meeting. Both of those are helpful to the public.
Incredibly helpful. Smart, smart, uh, TSD. Thank you, Ms. Dayton. Uh, thank you for that, Commissioner Jones. And yes, our minutes are part of our packet. So you've come to the Zoom meeting. Uh, you can go, uh, to co.munro.in.us and look at the calendar and you could see in our packet, uh, we have the minutes. And yes, Ms. Freeman has continued to post, uh, the contact information for each and every township trustee in Monroe County. Anything else, Commissioner Giffens?
Um, is the clerk still looking for election workers?
Yes, that is at the, um, uh, we have been playing a loop of a, uh, PowerPoint presentation at the beginning of our meeting. Uh, yes, indeed, uh, the clerk's office is looking for poll workers. For more information, go to monroecountyvoters.us. Uh, and you will see all the information about, uh, what it entails and, uh, the requirements, uh, which are pretty minimal. Uh, but even, uh, high school students can apply if they're of the right age and with parental permission, which is a great experience for, um, our local students. Great. I'm glad you raised that. Thank you. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, um, our next, uh, and I just, I just want to say that also, uh, Friday is, uh, September 11th, so please take a moment to reflect on those who were lost on that, um, important day 19 years ago. Cannot believe it was that long ago. Uh, we are, we are not having any ceremonies, of course, for the public because of safety, but, um, but it's important to take a moment, uh, if you would, on September 11th. Our next meeting is September, uh, 16th, uh, 2020, 10:00 AM right here on the Zoom channel for Monroe County. Uh, and with that, uh, thank you all and be well. Thank you for wearing your masks.